I'll call this meeting to order. Role call.
Yeah, Clark and Perry.
Here.
Larry Watson.
Here.
Millie Playa.
Here.
Item number three is the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregretted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item eight. Item number four, recognize people. Thank you everybody for being here. Jeff is signing on the sheet. Item number five is new business. Is anybody getting new business tonight?
No.
Larry?
No.
Shawna?
I have a new employee and so far so wonderful.
Well, good.
Jennifer Kirby is her name.
Good report on the new employees.
Yeah.
Tina, you got any news? Brian?
Shawna, if she, if she, doesn't work out, send her my way, you know, you never know. No, nothing, not this time. Clark, thanks.
Chris?
Um, I've talked to the sheriff about that SLFRF thing. You guys know what I'm talking about? The...
The Orca Thens?
Yeah, the Orca Thens. The reporting, the interim reporting is due on that, the thirty first of August. Um, I worked on it for a couple of days last week. I can't even get access to the site to find the report. I talked to Tim about it several times Thursday and Friday and he talked about maybe finding somebody to, like a firm to do that. There's, there's, as far as I know, we haven't seen anything on it at this point. So if we ever get access to, to do that report, it ought to be pretty straightforward. But there's another report due thirty first of October. And then annually after that, and he can, he can tell you more about it.
Have you talked to any of the counties to see how they're doing their...
Do I?
Have you talked to any of the counties to see how they're doing their...
No, I haven't.
I've talked to a few, some days I've been touching it, really get more, about no more of that. You know, and I think Tina was saying the same thing on that report.
Yeah.
I've talked to Tina, I've talked to Gaila. Gaila said there are some counties that aren't even, aren't even accepting the money because of, and the requirements. From what I've read, I've watched webinars on it. Um, I've read different things that, that they've put out, or read, uh, that the treasury department's put out. I've read things that consulting firms and stuff have put out. And they, they haven't even finalized the rules on that. What's, you know what I'm saying? So we're... And, and the scary thing about that is it's a pretty good chunk of money. If you go in and spend that money and then they come up with a rule and what you're spending on doesn't qualify, we pay it back. So...
That's the first thing, that's the first thing the auditor said, Norman said, you know, if you, you spend that money and they're gonna file suit on them and say if you don't have the money to pay it back, none of us do, none of the counties in Oklahoma.
Well, can't you put that money's in a interest-bearing account?
That's, that's, that's the only thing that there's, there's no direction on is the money that it yields is put in an interest-bearing account because there's no direction on the money that it yields.
But their report has to be done by August thirty first.
And whenever you do with the money, you have to do that interim report by thirty first of August.
And we, he looked at it, I spent over twenty hours last week looking at it, watching every video. First video they sent us, did you tell them the first video they sent was for five hundred thousand people and more? Second video we watched was the right video. You start looking at reporting on how to do it. I mean, we've got six grants right now through the state grants and BJA grants. Nothing's, it's nothing I've ever seen. I mean, and, and we've worked on it. We did find, and he found, the, he found...
I found a firm that puts out guidance on it. And they do, they do consulting and they will do the reporting. I, I called them, I talked to clerk, basically, they're supposed to be calling us back. Uh, just to get information to see, you know, if, if we decide to use that firm to do the reporting and stuff like that, what it would cost and what we would get from that.
We went to Cheryl at the city, uh, get her help, and she helped us with the other money. And we went to Cheryl, Cheryl said, basically, hey, we don't have to do that reporting. Yeah, we're getting money, but our money's coming from the state through the same program, but it's coming from the state. So our reporting's totally different. I've got a phone call into Ken Doak, um, to see how Ken and him's doing it. And I've got a phone call into Jeremy Bush. And then Sheriff Morris is also, um, trying to figure out who's doing their reporting in Pittsburgh County. But I, I have not got a hold of Ken or Jeremy yet. Called him on Friday, so hopefully he'll call me back today. But just to see who's doing Latimer County and the Skode County's reporting on, on theirs. But I'm telling you, it's, it's way above, and I mean, I told, and I told Commissioner Watson we'd get on it last week to see if we could do it. And I mean, it's way above anything that, that, and it's even, it even breaks it down even more than that. It's not just reporting of money. I mean, it's line item of who, who does money go to? Where does money go? Who did it go to? When did it go there?
Every contractor, every subcontractor, and I mean, it has to be anonymized, detailed reporting.
Yeah, partnering with like some of these towns, if you have, you partner with them, your reporting doesn't start when you write them a check. It goes to completion project.
Yes.
Their reporting picks up and the county does it.
So if, yeah, so I mean, basically, if we say we contract with the city of McCurton, well, we can't just put contract city of McCurton. We gotta put contract city of McCurton, and then we've got, we've got to see where they spent their money.
And that's what I'm saying, I mean, that's, that's...
And it's not, and...
You have to audit every penny of it.
And the other, and the other side of it, and I don't know if Chris told us, because I was on another deal. Um, we don't even see that the report's out yet. It's due August thirty first.
I can't find it.
But we can't even one of us find...
I've been all over the treasury's website and I can't.
And, and you find like a sample form, you can find sample reporting forms? But we can't find true reports where you, where you log in and plug numbers in. Because if that was the case, we could plug this number, we could plug the one point two and, and be done with it. But we can't even, we can't even find that they've put out. And then there's some things you read that says, okay, if you're, if you're a population under five hundred thousand, this August reporting's not, not, basically not ours. I've seen that this morning. But I, you have, I think it has to be done.
Everyone has to report on the interim things. And then the reporting changes if your population is over two hundred fifty thousand or you receive over five million total. Then the reporting is different, there are different requirements. But like for us, we fall under, we're under that on both, both numbers. From what I've seen, we would have to do the interim reporting by the thirty first of August. Then we would have to do the actual annual report by the thirty first of October. And then that's due every year by the thirty first of October. Um, at this time, that's the only reporting that I've seen on it.
And the reason October thirty first is, really, as you'll know, for the federal government, that's their, that's their fiscal year. Goes October, October.
The thing that makes me nervous about it, honestly, is, I mean, I don't, I don't mind doing it. I don't mind taking the time and researching and trying to figure it out. But if I don't, if I don't get it done by August thirty first, there were one hundred, or one point two million dollars. And that's my fault, so that makes me nervous.
Well, that's why we're spending it. I think we need to hold tightly, finalize the guidelines from the feds. I mean, that spooks me because we don't have the money to pay it back. And what penalties are they gonna put on you? Maybe none, but we don't have the money to pay it back.
Even that's a little bit screwed, sorry. But I had to come and go quite a bit watching the video on it. But I know that I saw them say you cannot hold it like a rainy day fund.
Right, that is true.
So if you can, if you can put it in an interest-bearing account but not hold it like a rainy day fund, then what's...
What's the difference?
Yeah.
How do you differentiate that?
Yeah.
Uh, just putting it to CD and drawing interest and... But the state auditor told us, they got no, they've got no say over it. Cindy Byrd said at the beginning of that meeting, I've got no say, I'm just trying to help you.
Right.
She's gonna tell you how to spend it, but she'll walk through the process of spending it.
What I think you're gonna see in the fifteenth and sixteenth, from what I'm hearing, is different guidelines that the state auditor office is gonna have on how to spend the money. Just by what I heard this last week at, at OSA meeting, what they're hearing from ACO, and what we're hearing. Cindy's actually working on, I talked to her a couple of times. I think you're gonna see a little wider, a little, a little broader span of things. Because what I'm understanding from Cheryl and Cindy is, is that this money that we've gotten, the tre, the, the treasury department's not gonna be the one audits they are. And they're, now they are finding the rules to do it and how they're supposed to do it, which they put out that first sheet, which basically was a breakdown of what they had. But I think what you're gonna hear this, at this fifteenth and sixteenth meeting, because from, just from what they've told folks that I know that's talked to them directly, is that we're gonna hear a little different guidance on how the money can be spent and what it can be used for.
That's a... The fed told us... The fed, you're thinking the fed's gonna give the state auditor the control.
Because they don't have, they, they don't have the resources or the ability to come and audit us anyways.
They would, they would pick right if they did.
Yeah. They don't have, they don't have the resources to come audit us anyways. And what's different about the American Rescue money is basically you're auditing, auditing, auditing us on the backside of it, where on the coronavirus money, you're auditing us on the front side of it. I mean, we've, we've flipped, we've flipped, we've flipped the, we've flipped the way it's, it's working, which basically makes each other work against theirself. Because why give this money out if you're not gonna allow the counties to use it to make their county coronavirus proof if another pandemic comes, which we see the numbers arising, um, right now? So...
She did say in that, in that meeting at Norman, that we could go back and pay our hands, kinda like a, it was a, I don't know, it was a hazard pay. I can't remember what she called.
Essential pay.
Essential premium pay. I mean, that, this would be a once in a lifetime, if we can figure out and do it and don't have to pay it back and we can report it right, it would be a once in a lifetime deal to give the people of Haskell County the hands, a raise. Not a raise, but a bonus, a longevity pay, something like that, we need to consider.
Yeah, up to twenty-five thousand dollars per employee.
But it's, it could be done...
It's a hundred fifty thousand of the annual Oklahoma average wage. Thirteen dollars an hour plus, it could go up to a hundred fifty percent. It was a big deal.
It's huge, it's huge.
But it'll be up to all of us to kinda figure out if that's what we wanna do and make sure we can actually spend it. That was kind of the state auditor.
But the main thing, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say the main thing is to get through the August thirty first report. And then you can kinda go from there.
Then you got two months to kinda figure a few things out.
Have you got calls into Cindy or Cheryl about the...
Cindy Byrd or Cheryl Wilson, I gave you Cheryl Wilson's...
No, I haven't, I, um, she gave me Cheryl Wilson's number Friday and said she's probably not working Friday.
Yeah, she was...
They've been ones, I mean, they're the ones, that's your contact.
I, I do have her information.
They had said at our meeting that we went to, that Cindy did, that they would have, when they got the guidelines, that they would have like a Zoom meeting or some, some sort of meeting online to give you the guidelines to help you get through that first report. And so I wanna say it was the week before last, I contacted Cheryl Wilson to ask if they had that set up yet. And they had not even received the guidelines from the federal government yet. So now that I didn't have...
Other than, other than watching webinars and looking at guidance from different emails that I've gotten from Michelle, from Tim, and from Tina, and from Gaila, I've spent all my time just trying to get log, a login to the treasury portal, and I still haven't got that, so...
Tim, did you not have the login?
We got the login. No login we have is one from Gaila. Um, Gaila did the original login because we didn't want there to be a hundred different logins. So he has that login. The problem we have is nowhere to plug that login at.
Right.
There's nowhere to plug it in.
Can't even go in and find the login page on this. I mean, it's, it's weird. I've never dealt with anything like that.
Did you look at those emails I sent you Friday afternoon? Because there was like a navigation through it?
We, when you do that, that navigation deal, there's nowhere to log in. When you try to get to a login page, there's not a login page. There's not a page to, to actually go in and log in and then even access the application that we turned in to get the money.
Right.
There's, there's not that page.
I don't know how to see it and apply for it.
Yeah, that, that, that page ain't there.
But you said Michelle had put a lot of her personal information in it as a contact to get, to get it rolling.
Yeah, and then we had to use, Gaila had to, Gaila had to create it and then Michelle had to use it to put all the information. And she had to submit her social security card, driver's license, just to get access to get in. And that, that page ain't there. When you, you, you can't access that portal. So it's like, okay, we've shut that portal down, which happens on grants because that's how you apply. That portal shut down, then they open another portal, that's how you report. Well, there's not a reporting portal that, that we can find.
We're two weeks out from the deadline, so I mean, that, you understand, that just makes me...
Well, the auditor better be, I mean, they should be able to do something, tell us or call the treasury or something.
And if we have to engage an outside professional firm to help us, we may have to, you know.
Well, I, I just thought it'd be a good idea to get a quote.
Yeah.
Just to see what...
I mean, that's one point two million dollars.
Right. If you're cautious, three thousand two...
Yeah, you're not just talking about one point two, you're talking about two point four, four or five. Because I mean, if we, if we lose this, you're not gonna get that next.
That's why it's, uh, I think everybody ought to try to make that meeting up there. Toss it, say everybody can be able, you know, same recommendation.
The one you're going to.
The code of the year?
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's after the recording.
That's after the recording.
That's in September, we, we're due in August.
Surely we hadn't touched the money, so maybe it won't be that much to put in the paperwork on, you know, that, that spend.
I'm probably gonna use on it and go on.
And we would if we can get to it, right?
That's the problem is not being able to get to it. If we can get to it, we could finger around and it figured out. But we cannot find the portal to get to it. I mean, and, and it, and Friday we spent half the evening. It does not appear that the portal, that there's a portal open yet. You could pull up sample, but it's like you cannot...
Sample reporting forms, but...
There's, there's no portal to put them, okay, then, okay, then here's the other side. You pull one of these reporting forms, a sample, once you fill it out, where can you send it to? There's nowhere to send it. I mean, even if you said, okay, we're, we're in the paperwork.
Well, there's guidance, it has to be reported on that treasury report.
On that portal.
But there's not a portal. So that's, that's just where we're at on the deal. I don't, I don't know where to go from there. I will talk to Cheryl Wilson and see if we can get some guidance there. But we're, I mean, we're two weeks out, we're gonna figure something out.
Print one out and mail it to the treasury so you know you got a hard copy sent in. They won't let you in, I mean, that way you know you've got it.
Yeah.
Is it, is it in a PDF from examples right now that you know of, or...
No, it's not a PDF, just kinda like it brings up a slip and it shows you boxes on what to do. It's not something you can actually fill, I'm just saying it's...
And you can't even print it out?
No.
Okay.
Because if it was something like that, we'd send it over to you guys, put it in PDF, and we could type it up and do something with it. Can't even do that.
If, uh, all that paperwork, everything, if y'all need any help, holler. Cameras out there, you know, and we'll do all of it. All of it, because I, you know, getting in touch, I have a lot, you know, people. Because it's kind of a long, drawn-out process, you know, while I'll be in touch and so...
Oh, this is gonna be a five-year process?
Yeah.
Or finish. It's just gonna be a big deal.
They kinda tell you that, don't they, in all the paperwork, yeah?
It's gonna go through the end of two thousand six, uh, two thousand twenty-six.
Any other new business, Sheriff?
The last week was a week of the devil. It started Monday, Raptor Commissioner meeting, pursuit of the motorcycle. He ran to one of our units on a motorcycle, drove out of it, crashed his motorcycle, ran the woods. We spent three hours trying to find him in the woods. As soon as that was over, had an individual wanting to kill himself. The deputies get there, he decides he's gonna cut himself, so he starts stabbing himself. We have to use force on him, use taser on him multiple times. And two guys had to go on a pole with him to get a knife away from him before he went to kill himself or somebody else. As soon as that got done, we get a call of a guy that we was chasing earlier in the day, was in his house shooting. Shoot, shot up his house, shot at his dad. We get out there, spend, stay out there almost four and a half hours, and stand off with him till we get him arrested. Spent on me twice, bring him to jail. Tuesday, starts the same, same mess. And then, uh, same little group of folks from the McCurton area are stealing trailers and, uh, stealing trailers. And then we got seven-headed cattle missing too. Problem that we run, that we're running into is that they are, this little group of individuals are Native American. And they understand that we put them together to get right back down. They think it's funny, um, but I'm gonna tell you, somebody's gonna wind up hurt out of this deal. They keep stealing people's stuff. And I mean, and I, and I will tell you, I have been out every night last week. In three nights, we came out at ten o'clock to three in the morning. And just set in these, in these areas. They'll drive around all night long, you'll catch them out driving around, you can follow as much as you wanna follow them, they don't care. But this is what we've, this is what we've come to. And like I told our guys, we're gonna stay on them, I don't, I don't care. Till we run out of money, we're gonna stay on them. The other side of it is, we had a huge decision that come down Friday, Thursday, come down Thursday. The Oklahoma Court of Criminal Appeals ruled that, um, Bossy McGirt, Sizmore, whatever you wanna call the decision, is not retroactive. Coming down to a four zero decision, which basically means that bad people are not being released. I talked to Judge late Thursday night, I talked to him Friday several times. He's already writing, um, he's already writing orders dismissing their request for dismissal. Basically saying that...
Order denied.
Order, order denying their, their motion to dismiss their case. So we've got anybody who has a prior conviction who is in jail or has a prior conviction where it's not retroactive, they're staying in jail. Uh, now, let me rephrase that. That's in Haskell County. There is, there is a lot of judges all over the state of Oklahoma who have already released people from prison because they believe the Supreme Court was retroactive and that's how they did it. I will say that Judge Henderson and Judge Sullivan did not, did not pull the plug early. They waited till we got the final decisions. And, uh, because of that, people from Haskell County are not, are not getting out. I mean, it's not gonna be retroactive on our side. Now, it's gonna, we, we believe it's gonna go back to Supreme Court. We believe the Supreme Court will, will certify the Oklahoma Court of Criminal Appeals decision, which means they won't rehear it. They'll just say, okay, yeah, it's not retroactive, we made a mistake. But if they rehear it, it could be another two or three years down the road and we'll see what happens. And they could, they could say, no, the Oklahoma Court of Criminal Appeals is wrong, it is retroactive. And then we file all these motions again, and I'm sure another tribe will make another request to the appeals court. So that's where we are. It is a big, it is a big deal right now. Because what it does for us is, it says that all these people who have old fines and old restitution, they still have to pay it. It's not retroactive, that conviction's still there, so they still have to pay Tina's office for those fines. And if they don't, we're still gonna pick you up, don't matter if you're Native American or not. We're still gonna pick you up on your, on your old fines, your old warrants, and your old failure to appear as a pay. Tina, that's how, that's how we look at it, that's how you guys are. So, um, so it's a big deal. It's a big deal for us, it's a big deal for our court clerk's office. Because if you think about it, a lot of their funding from the Supreme, from, from the Supreme Court comes from fines and costs. So if, if we're not having fines and costs, how are they supposed to get their allocations to pay their people? So it's, it's huge.
And also you're looking at someone who's convicted of murder.
You're right.
They're not getting out, or legalization, they're not getting out. And I think that's a win for everyone.
And, and the, and the big problem with that is, is US Attorney's Office, I mean, you think about thirty, forty, fifty-year-old murders that are out there that people are still in jail. The witnesses are not there. So if you're, the evidence isn't, I mean, on a murder, the evidence has to be retained by the district attorney's office. But sexual assaults, things like that, that evidence is not there no more. So if that evidence is not there, you can't properly try somebody. That evidence has been destroyed after seven to ten years of the case being resolved. So it's a big, it's a big deal, it's a huge, huge deal for Oklahoma. And, uh, we'll continue to move forward the way we are. I do know that they are getting pressure, because I know Councilman Perry's got several phone calls to go speak to victims, reference, um, Chalk Donation, or reference the Chalk Donations Corps. So they are getting pressure on that end as well.
All right, we'll move on to item number six, then approve the Mr.'s proceedings from previous meeting.
Make motion approve.
I'll second it.
Larry Watson, yes, Millie Playa.
Yes.
Clark and Perry.
Yes. Item number seven, approve like you feel, if we got any buckets. We have one blanket this week to Tankersley Foods, five thousand dollars, out of B six two.
Make motion approve.
Second it.
Larry Watson, yes, Millie Playa.
Yes.
Clark and Perry.
Yes. Item number eight, discussing consideration for July motion for election board. I'll make the motion, approve it. I'll second it.
Millie Playa.
Yes.
Clark and Perry.
Yes.
Larry Watson, yes.
Okay, item number nine, review and approve or disapprove of the utility fence updated for job piece three one two eight eight, Whitefield project, District Three. Is this...
Yes.
New real score?
Right up here, I just need to... Millie Playa to sign this right here. This is a job of Whitefield. Much to approve.
Yes.
Much to approve.
I'll second it. This is, uh, really don't need signage, but...
Is that our copy? Yep. Each one of us, yeah, we gotta sign both or, or a copy of it, whatever. And then if you just name picture.
So I'll just do copy of that.
So I'm just, that's the number right there.
Yeah.
It's on your paper.
No practice?
I can't, but I have an idea of a treasure document.
Okay.
Yeah. You were going in front of...
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. Now the...
Thank you Scott.
Thank you.
What was the...
I'm gonna make a motion, Clark second it.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Clark and Perry.
Yeah.
Millie Playa.
Yes. Item number ten, discuss consideration of lease vacate, seven one, two thousand twenty-one, twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one, from Herring Shaw, lease manager. This is just a notice of vacate and lease from Mark Herring Shaw that we discussed a couple of weeks ago. And I think we, we have tech here coming for the six months of lease, yeah, three thousand dollars paid.
Make motion accept it.
Second it. Would that be open back up for bid, right?
December, first of December.
Now, we need to have the, we need to have all, all the stuff wrote down on the lease.
We'll have, we'll have the contract sent into there by the end.
That's what that whole thing started. We didn't have a lease written out that you get free, doppin' and everything. We need to have a lease agreement that was gonna be put out, put everything in there we want. So this won't happen, you know, when we take the lease out. Let's get somebody to lease it. Because, you know, that was all the hours and how much you charge and everything that needs to be put in there, you know, and have to work with whoever gets it, or whoever wants it, whoever wants it. We need some, some more facts put down off.
Can we find somebody in thirty days?
Make any second.
Excuse me Joe.
Can we find somebody in thirty days? You know, we're gonna put it out for bid December the first.
Well, you have to advertise it for two or three weeks, and then you'll have to have the next week, you'll have to take the bid, and then...
Well, you have to advertise it for two or three weeks, and then you'll have to have the next week, you'll have to take the bid, and then.
Well, I mean, we don't, we don't necessarily have to wait till lease December first.
No, I don't think you can do it in thirty days and have it open back up. Because once they leave, and you go through the process, even if somebody is accepted, they gotta have time to move equipment in, get everything utilities on, and get geared up, I don't think it can happen in four weeks.
We can do it in October, four, as that goes, or whatever, you know.
And you don't play that time. I think you need to play it before December the first.
Then what happens if nobody don't bid on it?
All the agreements, we put in there this time, I mean, we have two different contracts this time, everything is just coming out black.
I got Larry Watson, yes, Millie Cloud.
Yes.
Clark and Perry.
Yes. Uh, item number eleven, discuss consider purchasing online companies disinfectant spray. Uh, this is something that Tim had brought to us, something like his last week, the week before last.
Last week.
We had talked about doing this out of the money that we was just discussing earlier, so I think we either need to put it on hold probably, or find a different avenue, what.
Commissioner, it's in, um, as of last Monday, we ordered it, like we talked about.
Oh, it's coming in.
It's already here.
Over here, yeah, cuz we talked about last Monday ordering it, and COVID virus is on the rise, and we had COVID in the jail.
So it's ordered, and it's here.
Everybody's agreed that we can't get down one point two.
I agree.
I'm paying the six hundred thousand dollars, we always set that up so we'd have money. If we don't get this, we, we can't say we're gonna get to one point two, right? It may not. So we set this aside to get this building here, go down and do a build. Also, over here at the courthouse, it's gonna have to have a lot of stuff done, and it's gonna fall in on us. So why don't we just pay the seventy eight hundred, right?
Yeah, seventy eight and some change.
Yeah, out of the, uh, out of general fund.
We, we can pay it.
Yeah, they all have COVID money, just like it was, till we get everything worked out.
We can pay it out of MLO, or out of MLO.
And they're, they're getting it all fired up right now to get over here and spray, get everything, start spraying this week.
Cuz that's a great idea, of having a sprayer, I think it'll, we can get the schools, the gym bases.
Yeah, we've got two, we've got two handheld sprayers, and then we've got that machine that will do our walls and our floors over there.
And maybe we can check with the nursing homes, they may want yours or something, I don't know.
VFWs and the, the VFW and the Chalktall deal out here.
I don't think we can do the VFW and the Chalktalls. We can only do things that are, that are non, that are, that are private entities, that are, that are private. We could do all of our county buildings, we can do all of our community centers, like our, our Eaton joint, like, but we can't just go do businesses.
We can do schools.
We can do schools.
Yeah.
We can do those, uh.
Government agencies.
Yes. So, I mean, we, we got it, and they're, they're working on getting it put together right now, it all come in pieces, so.
Well, we're gonna spend three, four thousand, two or three thousand dollars on hand sanitizer, probably do it on hand, but that's, that's, you know, then that just be a lot more effective than that would be.
Is there already someone designated to, to do it, like, who should we expect to be coming to?
Pollard, Chris is gonna help do it, Pollard's gonna do it, so we'll have, we'll have it rolling as soon as, as soon as they get it up and running.
Like, what about the actual mist? I mean, is that, you have a barrier?
We, we bought five cases of it, and, um, each gallon should do a hundred and twenty eight, each, each gallon should do a hundred and twenty eight gallons of product. Um, so we'll see how long it lasts us. Um, but it's like, it's, it's like a big, it's like a big water gun, basically. It's just a hot, it's just a real fine mist that will kill the virus instantly, they say. And I mean, they're using it, it'll, it won't just kill the virus, it kills the fluid, kills staff, kills everything. So. We got two handheld sprayers, and if we need another one, we can get one, but I don't think we will.
Well, I'm gonna make my move, pay this in, four thousand ten, four thousand ten.
Uh, second it.
Clark and Perry.
Yes.
Millie Cloud.
Yes.
Larry Watson.
Yes.
Item number twelve, sign of preparation, transfer of preparation, check for C P L three thousand. I'll make, I'll make it, no.
Second it.
I'll second it.
Clark and Perry.
Yes.
Larry Watson. Millie Cloud.
Yes.
I'm gonna go with, yeah, I made that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got everything done on it.
You've already done it?
Ask, that questions?
Yeah.
Cause she sent her, she sent those back to her. She emailed them, and I copied, pasted email, and sent it right back. Handwritten, done. You're welcome. So that audit should be completed.
Good.
There's those. Um, October, I gotta write down, is it October fourteenth?
What are you up to that?
Sa- when's the, when's the?
No, we're in September.
September.
September fourteenth, yeah.
Yeah, September fourteenth.
Show the thirteenth, bring up sale of fourteen.
September?
Thirteen to fourteen. Um. What do you think about doing flyers for the premium sale? And have the kids put flyers out at, at the businesses, try to get more, a different group of buyers, or get more buyers, you know what I mean? We might have, we might have to cook more hamburgers that high, but. We'll have that ready to go for some.
Probably the easiest way is to work with the schools, so add teachers on that.
Yeah.
I think a lot of it would be education, because most people don't even know what the premium sale is.
Yeah.
And, and a lot of people still think we go out there and build something, or buy it.
Gotcha. They think they actually buy it.
And they don't, they're not interested in going. Uh, and, and a lot of it, I think, is just, they haven't been educated what the premium sale actually is.
Tell you what I'll do, I'll give it Dawson, and maybe me and Dawson can put a video out with the kids, like, like a video with the video production crew, and put a video out with the kids telling what the premium sale is, and maybe get a, a glimpse of each FFA or four H program in that video with the kids saying, you know, come to the premium, and then get that video out on social media so people can see it.
Then you can come here, I've got a green screen we can put up.
Okay.
That one that.
I'll give it Dawson, let's see.
I'm no expert in that stuff.
But I think it's something to get, to get folks out.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I'd have to see what it was, yeah, it's one of our commission deals. For our old ones. Is there anything? Do you have somebody there? Do you have somebody there?
Problems? Okay, need that, a little short one.
Oh, just to do it that way.
Just to do it that way.
They can clear all the boxes in there.
I will put through it.
I'll give it to you, see if they can back out. Don't be busy.
Huh? That was in, most county, most county.
Are y'all having any complaints on, um, folks writing their address, marijuana places, or y'all?
I've, I've had one, and probably a little court here. Yeah, that's on specifics, if you found it pretty sorting.
I have just one layer, you got seven.
Gold full magnets, is that solid for permanent?
Chris is one of the. Oh, they're here Friday. Yeah, we work close with them.
I figured you did.
We work very close with them. We, we, Department of Bank in Texas helped us out.
We worked through for a couple of years, right? We didn't ever do any things that I don't remember, or just the magnets. So that come out of.
Right.
Those days makes you have a problem. We can put them home, check if they're good. But the gold magnets contract is what we had with.
That's what they were wanting to re-up, I think, though. I didn't know what it was for sure. I, I didn't see it.
Yeah, and we asked the, the partner to have a name and scream it on the public field, but.
Well, we better get it.
Okay.
Good, they're doing really good.
Chapter one's the next. Yeah, she said, don't leave me.
I understand you. She's good, uh, she's good too.
She's got like, yeah.
Probably.
Child, that's in that book.
Yeah. She's, she's good. Rick, did you know he gave my boy? Scott, you do football, too?
Football, basketball.
Football started up, man.
Mm-hmm.
You do work in our?
More, yeah. And then Berthyr, Radix, Airey, and some.
Go ahead.
First, Radix, Airey is a festival at Roger State. Sunday's a still one of the people that's used.
You ever call any of that, um, girls' basketball tournament, Ada? That big tournament they do?
I don't know what you're talking about.
I got to put on the Shriners, um, basketball classic. Look, they're bored. We, we, you know, they put they you know, got a lot of, got a lot of schools that don't break crowd, so they've been asking, so they put three of us on it and I think we're gonna try to, we're trying to stop bringing some you know, small school, you gotta, Oak Hall, Haas School.
They're big already.
Well, but big school, I was gonna, you know, like, put Chikody, Follow, you know, they'll put them guys back in if they wanna come.
Well, they've already done that. They had a small school, big school.
It just gets, we got away from where it was, where it was a long time ago.
Yeah, big schools best, big school, little schools are always pretty good, huh? They've been there forty one years.
Calling it? It's fine.
Yeah.
Somebody was.
Yep. Easy?
He's from Brown.
It's always a big room, yeah.
I work with a little, what's his name, lived here in, uh, West Town, Old West, Brad Rutter.
Yeah.
He does a good job.
I went with Frank, Brad, and Rusty. They did, they did Hal and Roland. And, uh, girls, does it make up girls' game?
Yeah.
And then let me tell you. Most of you had to work, 'cause they, both those teams. And it was a ballgame.
Yeah, Al's always got good, good girls' teams. I always remember going down here to Kenneth and working that game and play also here, uh, William Leon Nixon. That was in big country with the senior games. And right down here in Kenneth, it does look pretty rough. Playing half, last year's half was.
Did you say, say Dixon?
Leon.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. I hear the girl's game.
Forty one.
They, they bumpers probably there, but they swap hands. They're in Kenneth, you know, their old gym, in that lobby, you reach through, you know, they got bars there, you reach through, you put somebody on the floor.
You know, you take, you take them old gyms, like down there in Kenneth, you know, the old Chikody gym and.
Is it?
Those, those old gyms might not have held them, but it was loud, it was a.
I thought old, I thought old, uh, what's the name from the college boys, they were, uh.
Campbell?
No. The Laura, uh, Laura.
Yeah.
I told him about, he took a while and waved at me, he said, I don't know how much he paid you.
Where was that at?
At Chico.
At Chico?
So throwing down, we had the bus pull up, and pick a little window, watch it, get him out of here. That's when old Hanson was coaching, that's good. I felt guarantee a sticker back, back in the day. His name. He's still in, uh, has a car dealership under his coach. Anyway, his coach had a pretty good team. Of course, everybody know from the wire. He was born and raised here in Haskell County. And yes, he's still at the sticker. On the back of sticker. Coasty Kyoto on that, did he?
Yes.
Coasty McCurtain. Coasty Stigler, his girl's baby Stigler.
Coasty's retired now.
Again? Coasty, you're old. Coasty's still, uh, he been everywhere.
I guess Jensen took Jay back to Pittsburgh. Jensen, cause they're Kenan, then went to Pittsburgh?
Yeah.
Did Jay, was it Braggs?
Yeah.
They're back together against Pittsburgh.
Really? And they're giving it to mid-country. Called it one time.
Hey.
Larry, I'm glad to hear they're working on these projects for. They're even working on parks, yeah.
Are they?
Yeah.
Not so much as you can tell, but.
They got the yard rail up on the breeze, huh?
Yeah, I think that. Wish we're taking our town back fixing them softball, I'd say.
You ever get old in the gray pipes? They, they owe you some.
Oh, yeah.
They're floating down the river.
Yeah, they, they come up about four shores.
They won't forget to ask us who's gonna pay for them. What do you mean, you go pay for them? You gotta pay for them. Then we got this old commissioner, so we're in this other district over here, uh, on the valley and in Whitefield, he had a project from, I guess, our, here.
Yeah, also. We have meeting this week's call.
Yeah.
Third.
There's another old boy that is up my way now. He's Stigler, would you have Maxwell, you know, would you have? Went to service and he went to work for a phone company. He definitely comes down here to all the reunion every year. He's handy. I seen old Rick Waldman, his wife at the referee's tank here a few weeks ago.
Seen him, where at?
At Falcon City, at referee's tank here two or three weekends ago.
Yeah. Does he still call with you guys?
Yeah, he does football and basketball and then he does, uh, those little kids' softball. He's a good one. I, I'm just, I prefer basketball game living a lot. He's good.
Is that not good guy?
Yeah, he goes to Alsal Central. Retires, no doubt, after thirty years.
You know, Hollywood apartment.
He was in the magnets shop, he ran the magnets there on that forty. Uh, the Salso residence.
Okay, we don't need the extension anyway. No action on our number fourteen, our number fourteen to adjourn.
Make motion.
Larry Watson?
Yes.
Billy Cloud?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.